Okay. All right. Then, welcome. We will go ahead and call our October 25th Killable Hills Board of Commissioners meeting to order. So, welcome. If you would please rise and join us for the pledge of allegiance.
Let your allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It was with great shock that we all learned of the public servants who were killed as a result of the attempted prison break at the Paspatank Correctional Center on October 12. Correctional Officer Justin Smith, 35, Elizabeth City, had worked as a correctional officer since 2012. He provided security for the specialty sewing plan at the facility. Veronica Ronnie Darden, 50, of Belvedere, was the correctional enterprises manager of the facility and oversaw operations of the specialty sewing plant. Ronnie was the wife of Eric Darden, a public services member of our Killable Hills family. Words cannot truly express our heartache that we all feel during this difficult time. Please keep the Smith and Darden families, along with all the unfortunate staff and families, in your prayers as we announce when they're scheduled. Thank you. Thank you. First up is the Agenda of Preambles, which is a light agenda this evening. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Others in favor, please sign by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. We do have one item of new business this evening. Meredith is going to give us just a brief update on the flood insurance maps and then we'll move straight into our public forum. Thank you.
Thank you for giving me the time to update you on our preliminary flood maps. Since the last update to the Board of Commissioners in August, the appeal period has started. It opened on August 16th. It's a 90-day appeal period. This period was for formal objections to the new maps. The appeals are based on empirical data that show that the proposed BFEs, special flood hazard boundaries, and the zoning delineations are scientifically or technically incorrect. The appeal period will close on November 13th. Following the 90-day appeal period, FEMA will address and resolve all appeals and finalize changes to the firm maps. There is not a specific timeframe for this step, but once complete, FEMA will issue a letter of final determination, which will establish a final flood hazard data effective dates for the new firm for the community. This will start a six-month adoption process in which the communities will finalize the flood ordinance and hold required public hearings on maps and regulations. As you recall, in January, staff presented options to deal with the new maps and the Board of Commissioners agreed that the formal appeal was not our best interest because of the tremendous engineering costs and lack of potential success. Instead, the town sent a letter to John Dorman of the North Carolina Flood Mapping Program. He's the director, and Louis Rodriguez of FEMA to address several town concerns regarding the maps, including the addressing issues on the website, the map legend, the lack of local government involvement in the development of the map, the coastal model used to create the maps, the lack of consideration to shallow flooding, and the lower base flood elevations X-zone areas that we all know are prone to flooding in our town. The Board of Commissioners also agreed to direct staff to work on a higher regulatory standard intended to protect the town's infrastructure and private property, as well as work on a public information campaign regarding the new firm maps. Staff continues to meet monthly with the Dare County group, which includes all municipal planners and the county planning director. The goal of the group is to work together to create a higher regulatory standard that are roughly consistent throughout the entire county. The general idea is to create a local elevation standard that would apply to the entire town regardless of the flood map boundaries. The county itself has determined that the local elevation will likely be eight feet. Staff is still working on our exact number, but it is a strong possibility that we will also be using eight feet with 12 feet on the east side of NC-12. Additionally, the group has received input from the Outer Banks Home Builders Association. The home builders offered several ideas with the goal of regulatory consistency from town to town. Our group met with the home builders last Thursday and discussed specific regulatory standards and they are in agreement that the town and county need to establish a local elevation standard to protect structures. Several items were discussed and the meeting was very productive. We plan to meet with a few of the home builders to further discuss the regulations. We're appreciative to the home builders. The entire group is appreciative of the home builders for reaching out to and working with the towns. At the next county group meeting, the local planners intend to start reviewing the model ordinance and begin the process of drafting a flood damage prevention ordinance with the higher regulatory standards. And in the near future, staff will be presenting options and specific local elevation standards for the Board of Commissioners to discuss. The second objective of the group is a public education campaign. The group is working on two campaigns directed at construction and one directed at flood insurance. It is our hope that property owners in the X-zone, as you know, we are going from over 5,000 properties in flood zones to less than 500 properties that are being flood zones and properties that we know have the potential to flood. So, our hope is that the property owners will maintain flood insurance to protect their property now and in the future when the maps are updated. The county commissioned a local artist who developed a logo and as you can see, the logo has four houses on it because one of four houses will flood. This will be a consistent logo throughout the campaign. Currently, there are two messages. The first one you see here is flood happens anywhere. And that's directed at those in the X-zone and those that the base flood elevation has been lowered. Flood happens everywhere. The second message deals with buying flood insurance. And don't be fooled by the X-zone, buy flood insurance. We are also developing brochures with the same logo for more information about types of flooding and insurance. The insurance brochure, I'm sure you can't read it. It's very draft form at this time, but it's what your insurance rates are based on how much higher you go than the base flood and preferred rate. We're working with several of the insurance agencies here on the beach to try to get this data out to the public. We're trying to get the Board of Realtors and the home builders to also carry it in their offices so that that's available to them. And the flood brochure is three-fold, so think of it folded in thirds if you don't mind. And it talks about the different types of flooding that we have in our area. It's not just, as you remember, the coastal model that they use only dealt with overtopping of the dunes. It did not deal with any downside flooding and it did not deal with shallow flooding from rain at all. Additionally, the group is working with the county on a website that will consolidate all the town maps and regulations into one site. The group agreed last week to purchase the domain name of obxfloodmaps.com. The idea of the website is similar to the More Beach to Love website where you can get general information at one site and then you can click on each specific town for the specific maps and regulations in that town. This will be a great tool for homeowners, potential homeowners, builders, and insurance and financial agents, as well as local governments. I would like to express appreciation to Donna Creve, the county planning director, for her help with coordinating all these meetings and developing the public campaign, and to Greg Ball, the GIS coordinator, for the amazing maps that he has provided for the town to assist with our decision-making and facilitate discussions with the publics. These maps are something that town staff could not have accomplished on our own. With the Board of Commissioners consensus, staff will continue to draft the model ordinance with the higher regulatory standard and will continue to work with the county on a countywide group on regulations and the public campaign. Our goal is to have specific standards to discuss with the board in early 2018.
That's great.
Yeah.
Any questions?
Any questions? Oh, there was another page to that. That was the front. Anyway.
That's great.
Okay?
Straight up.
Yeah, thanks, Mary.
So, we move straight into our public forum this evening. You may recall that we do this twice a year where we try to have a little bit more of an informal atmosphere and setting. There's really nothing on the rest of the agenda other than this where we basically just take comments, feedback, suggestions from the citizens or from those that are here. We're open to hear anything, good, bad, ugly, whatever, and then gives us an opportunity as a board to look at what we may want to schedule on future agendas and how we can work with staff to address any item that you bring forth. So, there are no time limits with this. That's one of the other reasons we do it in this format instead of the traditional public comment time. And what we'll do is we'll just call from the floor. We still do ask for you to go to the podium just so we can identify. It's easier to pick up. These are still televised and that way we can share this information with those who can't make it tonight. So, and even though there's no time limit, you'll still just identify yourself, please, for the record by name and address. With that, we'll get started and there's no particular order. So, right up front. I'll come back. Can I get them and then slide right over you, John?
Sure.
You guys together?
Yep, we're together.
Welcome.
Hi there, everyone. I am Sue Arts. My husband Matt. And we live at 400 West Sockle Street in KDH. And we just wanted to come here today to make sure everyone knows that this Sunday we'll be having the Fourth Annual Halloween Parade of Costumes. And that's happening at Kelly's in Mag's Head. Family-free event. Everybody has a great time. We've collected close to $4,000 so far in donations from local businesses and we have eight costume categories, ranging from little kids to family. And we give away first, second, third prize. And it's a great time. So, we just want to make sure everybody knew about that. And then also, starting tomorrow, I guess I'd like you to have that.
Starting tomorrow, we have our Second Annual Halloween International Film Festival, which is happening right here in Killable Hills at RC Theaters. And that's a three-day independent film festival. And it's happening, it starts at 1:00 p.m. on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, and goes until about 10:00 or 11:00 each night. And we've got over 40 independent films from all over the world, including four locally filmed short films that are going to be screening. And we've got, I believe, a little over a dozen or so filmmakers coming from out of town, as well as our local filmmakers that are going to be there for their screenings and doing some Q&amp;As afterwards. And we have nightly meet and greets out in the lobby and photo ops on our orange carpet. And it's just a really cool opportunity and something new and we just want to officially invite everybody here and everybody listening to come out and enjoy it and help us welcome these visiting filmmakers and then cap it all off with the free parade of costumes on Sunday. And I guess we could say that we've entered early talks with the town about, because as you know, Kelly's is not going to be around too much longer and that's been our home for our parade for four years. But we have started some early talks in hopes of relocating the parade to Killable Hills starting next year. So, that's another reason we want to urge all of our neighbors to come check it out if you've never been. It's a great, free, family-friendly event for all ages and it's a lot of fun.
In our mission, we have several family businesses, but OBX Entertainment, Matt and I, we run that and that's our local entertainment website. And our mission is to bring business here during an otherwise slower time of year and trying to create something similar to Bike Week. We call it Hallow Week. And, you know, and we've definitely seen last year for the parade, we had over 200 paper registering costume attendees and out of those 271 were not from Dare County and some came as far away as Maine in Ohio and they said that they'd specifically planned their vacation around our parade. So, that's just our mission and we're trying to spread the word. You can find out more information on obxhalloween.com and we do have some of these postcards that I guess maybe I can leave somewhere. They're two-sided with the film festivals and parade.
There's a, if you want, there's a table in the back. That'd be great. People could grab it and leave it later.
Yes. You said you're donating donations. What is that going towards?
Like I said, we have eight costume categories at the parade.
So, the prizes?
Yes. Yep, yeah. There's first, second, and third prize for each category and we have three judges, not us. And, yeah, they, you know, they take their judging very seriously. And also, I should mention, we have, we call them trick-or-treat stations in Kelly's yard. And so, this year, we have a couple of nonprofits with us and everybody registers, gets a trick-or-treat bag and then the kids and adults can take that around. And people can hand out their business promo, as well as treats for the kids. Yep, so that's pretty much what it's all about.
Well, thank you for sharing.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Yeah, thank you.
So, what time on Sunday does the parade start?
Yes. Everything starts on Sunday at 2:00 p.m. The parade itself starts at 3:00 p.m., but like you said, we have the free trick-or-treating and the registration table opens at 2:00 p.m.
And there's also pre-registration available online. We have almost 20 pre-registered so far. Most of them, again, are not from this area and had never been to our parade before. So, we're happy that we're definitely bringing some new people into town.
Great. Yes, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Max, John, can you touch your hand up? Welcome.
Hi, everybody. I'm John Windley, 512 Small Place. I have a question. Could the Board, or would the Board be interested in sending a letter to all retailers who have had the plastic bag banned lifted, encouraging them to continue to use 100% recyclable shopping bags? I think it is in line with our value of town and really enhances overall brand for Outer Banks. So, what do you guys think about that? Is it something we can do?
Yeah, and that was the plastic bag item was definitely one of the things that we wanted to get some input on. Unfortunately, there's already a picture posted on social media today of a bag that someone found on the beach. Yeah. Definitely, I'd be in support of that. I think it would be a good idea.
From a logistical perspective, as far as obtaining the list of businesses?
Use the Chamber of Commerce.
Do they have, if they're members? And then, that would be a place to start? And then, if they're not members? Yeah, you know, it used to be a required business license, privileged license, but that's not, that ended several years ago with the general.
You can use the tax records and sort out commercial business.
Okay.
Because it used.
That way we.
And then filter from there.
Okay. Okay. I think that's very doable. What we'll do is, since the plastic bag was kind of a big topic and what we've publicized, why don't we allow anyone who wants to speak and share ideas on the plastic bag? Let's do that all at this time. So, you can raise your hand and then we'll go, we'll do plastic bags and then we'll move on to another topic once everyone that's spoken about plastic bags has spoken. Does that sound like a plan? Okay.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Is it possible to pull up a website? Is that okay?
Right.
Oh, they do it? Can I give you a website to pull up?
You have to be in a specific spot, right? To be where you're supposed to be?
Yes, please. Yes.
Hi, I'm Amanda Hooper. I don't technically live in Killable Hills, but you can find me one side of the county to the other, lying around in a Prius. So, this is an organization that I stumbled upon with my Girl Scout troop. We were going to take it on and then about a month or so later, we decided that we were all too busy and that we just needed to stop our Girl Scout time. So, it's sort of got dropped behind. It's an organization out of Australia called Boomerang Bags. And essentially, what it is, is volunteers from churches and Girl Scouts or all kinds of organizations will sew bags made out of upcycled material. So, your thrift stores and things like that. The bags have been left in crates in front of all of your retailers and grocery stores to be taken free of charge and then to be returned at your convenience. So, if you're one like me who doesn't have a ton of space in their pantry, to have the 10 reusable bags that I need and keep them in my house can be kind of cumbersome. So, the idea to be able to drop them back off, like when I'm zipping by the store the next time, is really great. And I don't know about you guys, but I'm the queen of having them in the car and then getting all the way through the grocery store before I realize that they're still in the car. So, the idea of them being right out front of the stores makes it super easy. So, it's not exclusive to one store and we would obviously have to have their permission, but you could say, pick 10 of them up at Boobion and at the Dare Center and then return them to Harris Teeter. And then the group that would actually be, you know, petting up Boomerang Bags could help make sure things were level. But I think with the amount of t-shirts at thrift stores and the number of nonprofit organizations and groups that can take on this kind of simple sewing project, so we could really have more bags than the whole beach needed forever. I don't know if you can do this because I was just sort of checking it out. If you scroll all the way down, there's going to be a map that shows you where they are. And so, it's a little bit, there's actually a group out of Wilmington. I don't know how big they are. I haven't contacted them. They're in DC, they're in New York City. They're sporadic all over. I don't know how successful they've been here in the state, but I think it's something that's really simple. It's almost zero cost. Getting permission from the stores is definitely going to be the hardest part, but I don't think it'll be difficult to get people to participate in either the production of the bags or, and the program. So, just something simple that we could maybe, maybe say, well, here's another.
It's a pretty good idea.
Yeah, it's a pretty neat.
Definitely a thought.
Yeah. Thanks, Mary. Put this thought right there.
Yeah, and I thought it's definitely going to be, maybe even the community appearance committee to talk about too. So, okay, next, we'll keep going. Yeah, thank you for sharing, Amanda.
Yes.
Was your hand up for that or no?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, welcome, Colleen.
My hand's always up for something. Colleen Almone, 909th Avenue. I also had a recommendation for the bags. These are the bags that I use. They're made of 100% recyclable material and you can wash them out so they don't get old grooves. You don't get chicken goop on the bottom. But I was trying to brainstorm about this because obviously you are either super passionate about it or you really don't care. There's really only two schools of thought there. So, what I thought was maybe we can find some type of bag like this. And remember with the marathon, every town had its own color and we were supposed to wear flags and t-shirts and root everybody on as they ran through our town. Maybe every town could have their own color bag and we can have like a KDH cares, Mag's Head cares, Duck cares. We can use the same type of logo that will incorporate the Outer Banks in some way and sort of make it like a competition. And I think that on one side of the bag, we might be able to do some type of sponsorship each year, like maybe design it each year. You can have like a collector's item. Everybody wants to get a different one when they come on vacation. You can use them for the beach. You can put your wet clothes in them. You take your gym clothes in them. But I think that since there are so many people who feel so strongly about this, if we can turn it into a competition, I think that would make it really fun. And depending upon what kind of cost, since obviously we'd be getting them in bulk, maybe what we can do is charge an extra dollar and have the dollar go toward our local food pantry or maybe select a different nonprofit each year to support so we can kind of be knocking everything out at the same time. So, that was my suggestion.
Great. Yes. Thank you, Colleen.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Ivy, welcome.
How's Ivy? How's Ivy? Her name is Ivy Ingram and I live at 1002 Swan Street in Killable Hills. I have a few suggestions. By a few, I mean, a lot. So, there's a couple of things that Surf Rider is going to be doing and in the process of working on. And the first is developing a website. We just bought the domain name and it's more of an education, but also a little bit of pressure. So, any retail businesses who are going to remain plastic-free will get listed on the website. Eventually, we'll turn, hopefully, potentially, maybe turn it into straws and Brew Station has already gone plastic-free on straws and just reducing plastic in general. But plastic bags is going to be our start. So, we're hoping, like was suggested, to start contacting businesses. So, maybe that's, so we're not like reinventing the wheel. Maybe it's important to get them coordinated on. Yeah. And then, so that education piece, I think alone, is important. And I think the stores, I think the retail stores, at least the bigger ones, would be really on board with that education piece. I've talked to several of them and they're not happy about it. They're not happy that corporate has brought the plastic back. So, almost every big retail store that you talk to, they're not happy about it. So, and neither are the people who work there. So, I think, you know, just things like that program or, you know, even just an education. I could talk to one of the managers at Harris Teeter, just a sign that says in the parking lot, hey, did you remember your reusable bag? Because half the time, people have and they just leave them in their car. So, even just a sign, you know, a reminder sign. And also, maybe a free place to get them. And we also have a donor who would like to set up bags and sponsor bags. So, I love the competition idea and I may have the funding. So, maybe we can figure that out, or at least a big piece of the funding. So, there's that. And then, so education, making bags more accessible. And then, the other piece of it is proving that the ban worked. So, part of our biggest mistake, probably looking back over the last 10 years, is that we didn't get enough data to prove that it was working. And so, you may have seen about a month ago or maybe a couple of weeks ago, when all this was happening and it was in legislation, they were voting. We came out with a map and it was a map that actually, we got the information from the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality, which is kind of ironic. But, so the map, what we did was we took a map and we showed on, by using an app, people could pinpoint the exact location of where they picked up a bag. And if you saw the map, it was really clear that it was working, but it just wasn't quite enough information. So, what we're asking everyone to do, and we're turning over, the Surf Rider Foundation oversees the Adopted Beach program for the entire, at the entire county. And so, what we're doing is we're turning that over to an app called Clean Swell. And so, we're asking all of our adoptees to turn in their information to Clean Swell, which will allow us then to be able to say, hey, this is where bags were found. This is how we compare to other areas that either do or don't have bags. It'll just make it a lot more, it'll give us some data to go on. So, maybe the town encouraging people to use that map if they, even if they're not, even if they don't have an adopted beach, but to just log any plastic bags that they find, to log it and log the location of where they were. I think that might be.
The list for what? The businesses?
Yes.
We just got it from the Chamber. We just used the Chambers list. So, that was the, we just used their retail list from the Chamber. So, but the North Carolina Retail Merchant Association also has one as well. But I'm sure in.
Yeah.
Good too. And, yeah, I think, I think that's all I have, but. More great suggestions. Thank you.
Thanks, Emily.
Thank you. Jennifer. Sorry. And I'm sorry if I overtook you. Welcome to the.
Hello, thank you for having me. This is, I'm Jennifer Alexander and my address is 116 Tallpines Court, Killable Hills. I'm actually a resident of Collington, but I did want to come speak on this issue and I appreciate the opportunity. First, I just wanted to thank you guys for your leadership in speaking about this issue and I just really appreciate your leadership, you know, really being in support of maintaining the bag ban. And so, just as a citizen, I just want to say thank you. And so just as a citizen, I just want to say thank you. I don't have any groundbreaking ideas, but I just wanted to show what I do and possibly, you know, consider some sort of campaign that we can do within our town. County would be great, but where we're kind of educating people about how easy it is to use the bags. One of the things that I've found, when I've had discussion with people about the use of reusable bags is the concern that, well, you know, it gets dirty and then it's, you know, I can't use it and then I can't wash it or it doesn't carry enough stuff or I don't want the paper bags because they break and this kind of thing. So I'm a therapist and one of the things that I have learned in my career is that visuals are a helpful way to retain information. So I brought a visual. This is my handbag that I carry around. And so what I'm going to pull out of here are just four reusable bags that I got from a company called Eco Bags about 10 years ago. And I point out 10 years ago for a reason, because I still have them. Each bag was marketed to hold 40 pounds each. And I can truly tell you, unfortunately, I made a video of myself carrying them and showing their weight, but I had some formatting issues, so just figured I'd just come here to show you. So these bags here, this is 160 pounds worth of groceries can be held in this. I personally have done it myself. These are four bags right here that fit right here in this little purse. So I think it'd be really helpful for people to maybe have a visual about that. And as you can see, you know, they're washable. And, you know, there's different brands and there's, you know, so it's not necessarily that this is the best brand, but I just think it's a good example that, you know, the excuse that they're, you know, it gets bags dirty and that kind of thing. Well, I mean, I wash these guys, you know, they're just going on the delicate cycle and there you go. And I've had them 10 years and I haven't even had one string break. And again, it's not so much about the particular line as much as it is just showing the ease of it. You know, like, you know, here's my purse. I'm not breaking my back carrying it. Hi, you know, so I just think it's really helpful for that visual of people to be able to see how easy it really is to use them. And also, you know, I just like the particular ones I have because, I mean, truly I can put all of my groceries for a family of four in these four bags. So I guess that's all I wanted to say. And I'm just kind of hoping that maybe because you've taken such leadership on this issue, that maybe you'd consider some sort of like campaign that includes visuals of the ease of using reusable bags, in particular ones that are washable and that are capable of holding quite a bit. Like I said, they truly do carry 40 pounds each. I mean, let me tell you. I'm one of those that doesn't like to do two trips from the car. I have to do two trips with them. I do have to admit that. But it will carry 160 pounds and that is in this bag right here. All right, well, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to comment on the bags? Any other ideas or comments to share? We've heard some great ones. So obviously processing, oh, bags?
Sure.
Okay, cool. Yeah, please. Welcome.
My name's Michael Flynn. I live in Waves, North Carolina, Coast of Federation. So I was just doing some research before the event tonight when I saw your host in the forum, trying to think of some incentives. And I came across a dissertation from a student at Princeton back in 2013. And she determined that it was more of a disincentive to tax the bags with a 5% tax than to provide an incentive. And her findings were pretty stark. It was at about 50% of the shoppers reduced their behavior when there was a tax compared to when there was incentive. I'm sure everybody here would probably be in favor of using reusable bags to the market you're trying to attain or the people who are not using that kind of behavior. And so maybe just start a petition to, I know they have passed the bill against Health Bill 56 or repealed it, so to encourage our legislators to encourage a tax for future consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming up and speaking. So a couple of kind of bringing it together thoughts before we move on to a new topic. So I threw out in the middle of this, the Community Appearance Committee because that's a natural forum, a group that we already have established. I think with all the great ideas we heard, I think a plan that encompasses them from an education campaign to exploring the tools that were, that were mentioned, to the competition, the incentive, looking into the Boomerang bag and how we can partner and collaborate, not only certainly with Surf Rider and the Clean Swell, but this really isn't just a KDH issue. This is, this is an Outer Banks, Dare County. That's where it started. So I'm also thinking it would be a little unfair to say, okay, just send all this to the Community Appearance Committee. I think they need to be involved and our chair's here, which is great. But I'm also thinking we probably need to put a call out for inviting other towns who may want to have a representative. And it may be an ad hoc committee or task force aside from the Community Appearance Committee. So I think with everyone's patience, let us process this and then present kind of a game plan and next step forward in working with you as the chair of the Community Appearance Committee and also thinking, how do we get the other stakeholders that really need to be at the table? Ivy, Matt just walked in not too long ago, Surf Rider, as well as some representatives from other towns, if they want to be engaged, and hopefully they would be, especially if you watch this tonight, you hear the passion. They should be very well aware of how the majority of citizens felt when this came up. Numerous proclamations, resolutions, people speaking out of public comment. And this obviously can be larger than just KDH, but I think there seems to be such an interest from this seated board in doing something that we can take it on to start that charge. So does that sound like it?
Yeah.
Okay, everybody? Okay, but thank you so much for bringing forward these great suggestions. I mean, this is where it starts and Michael, you as well with the town. There's some people, oh, tax, but I think that needs to be part of that discussion as well. Absolutely. Any other comments?
It's kind of disheartening to watch this whole thing have taken place over the last, I guess this year, this hasn't been, about the last year. When you see, seeing the news and on Facebook, there's entire countries, Africa, Europe, South America are banning not only plastic bags, but my wife read me something the other day. First and aside, we visited Costa Rica in 2004. I'm fortunate enough to go on a little vacation there. And even back then, all the bottles for soda were returnable. They didn't have any plastic bottles. They didn't have any plastic water bottles. And now they just passed a law that there's no plastic bags, no plastic bottles, no plastic silverware. I mean, every, it includes virtually everything. I believe you can still have like baggies in your house to store your leftovers. And here we are going in the opposite direction. It's very disheartening. I mean, when, when some people might refer to as third world countries in Africa are saying, we don't want plastic bags. And where are we going with it? So, and I, it would be great if we could put all these ideas together, use all the ideas, put them all into one giant idea and just say back to Raleigh, say, you know what, we're not going to, we're not going to let this defeat us. We're going to take care of it and we're going to try to protect our beach and our county and with a lot of help from everybody. I appreciate you.
Thanks. Any other comments? Okay, well, we'll move to the next topic of your choosing. So who would like to go next? Jack is welcome.
I'll be pleased to see all the candidates for KDH are here. And we're going to lose one who happens to be a very good commissioner on behalf of all the citizens. Even those two or three that didn't vote for you, thank you for your service. The board knows that for about the last 15 years, I occasionally come up here and talk about bicycle issues. And that's primarily what I want to talk about tonight, but in a slightly different context. There's three others in the Outer Banks that, beginning in early March, are going to ride across the country on our bicycle from San Diego, California, over to St. Augustine, Florida. And when we get to St. Augustine, Florida, we then go to turn north and pedal up to the Outer Banks. Total distance will be about 3,700 miles. Now, we're all seniors, so this is definitely something we love to do and we're doing it as a bucket list because we only have X number of years ahead of us. But there's a serious purpose behind the whole thing. All three of us have suffered tragedies in our life, from cancer primarily, but also multiple sclerosis. And we're going to use this event to raise funds for two of the local organizations in the Outer Banks. Some of you know, my wife was diagnosed with terminal ovarian cancer in 2015. And that was, the diagnosis was done at the Outer Banks Hospital. And it was such a shock at the time because not only was she diagnosed, she told, was told it was terminal. It could not be cured. And I was on the point of, I wasn't on the point, I panicked. And I ran to the volunteer organization at the hospital called Hands of Hope. And I was weeping. I didn't know what to do. And those people, there were four of them, two nurse navigators, the social worker and the volunteer coordinator took me by the arms and marched me back down to the emergency room with my wife. And from that point forward, in cooperation with the Dare County Hospice, they guided me through that whole experience and made me the best caregiver I could possibly be. It was extremely difficult to go through this process. So we're going to raise money for Hands of Hope and for ICO with the provision that ICO funds will only be used for people afflicted by cancer or the caregivers of cancer victims. One of our riders, a lady named Rita Ayers, has multiple sclerosis and she's going to do the whole ride with us too. So her focus is on MS. On the 11th of December, I'm going to present more details on the ride to this board. On the 4th of December, I'm going to give a similar talk to the County Board of Commissioners. I've been invited to do so by Bob Woodward, the chairman. So I would ask everybody tonight and those that will watch this film, keep this in mind. We'll have a blog that you can follow our progress across the country and think about reaching into your wallet and help people that desperately need that help.
Jack, on your website or blog, are you also going to have like a link or something with if people want to contribute online, that they would be able to do so?
Yes, yeah. It'll be online or by mail, whichever way.
Remarkable thing you guys are setting out to do.
Thank you, Jack.
Thanks.
Thank you, Jack.
Who would like to share next? I know we're not done yet. Someone has to want to speak. Anyone? Don't want to make people nervous, bust air, huh? Any other topics? Yeah, you can speak more than once.
Okay. I was just curious at how the land use plan survey went.
Do you want to, are you prepared to give at least a little where we, I mean?
Sure.
Where we are.
Okay.
Such as a camera guy. No, is she okay to speak? No, I think you're getting the eye. Yeah, you're going to have to be. I'm sorry.
I do not have the exact number in my head, but the online survey was successful. We had, I want to say about 1,700 people that participated in the online survey. We did have a lot of open comment areas that the board added to that survey. And what staff is in the process of doing is categorizing the comments so that when you get them, you'll be able to see how many were for stormwater or recreation or beach access or bike paths or bulk trash or recycling. So, and there's probably over 1,500 comments between all the surveys with each. There were five places with open comments, but.
We asked for it.
So it has taken a little bit longer, but I think it's going to be worth it when we present it to you so that each comment doesn't have to be read and categorized. We'll be able to do that for you. We also, I'll let you know, have released the request for proposals for a consultant to do the land use plan, to update the land use plan. It was sent out last week? Last week, week before, week before. Anyway, and we asked for that on November the 13th. I think some people, it's Veterans Day holiday, but our Veterans Day holiday is that Monday. So whatever that Friday is of the Veterans Day weekend, that's the closing date for the RFPs and then we will. It's Friday, November the 10th. And I don't know if we'll have an interview process after that. It'll depend on what the RFPs, if there's people that are close, we might try to do an interview process. But we will update the board hopefully at the December meeting. And hopefully have the land use plan results for you at that meeting also. Is the plan.
Good.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks.
Looking forward to it. I think we're going to have a lot of input, which is what we wanted. I mean, we did a strong push. We had the suggestion to do the postcard. I think prior to the postcard, we may have had 400 or 600 responses in the postcard and so ending with around 1,700.
And just as an aside, sorry I heard. When, when we did the mail out one in 2007, we got about 2,000 or 2,200 returns. So we're very much on par with the, you know, the number of surveys that we did going to the online. We also had about 25 people do a paper surveys that we are entering.
You're manually entering those. Good. Yep. Yeah, Luke, welcome.
Hi all, I'm Luke Muller. I live at 502 South Memorial Boulevard. And as I was sitting here, I was thinking, I witnessed an amazing presentation a couple of days ago and I would feel remiss if I didn't put in a plug for them. It was an organization called Mono Al Hermano and it essentially offers free tutoring to Spanish language students. And it generally improves or seeks to improve bonds between the established community and our growing Latino population in this town and also in the county. And I was just blown away by this presentation.
Anna Frimpong.
Oh, Anna Frimpong, yes, was our speaker and organizer. She's an amazing woman. I would encourage any and all of you, if you know any Spanish, if you know anybody who knows Spanish, you know anybody who knows three words of Spanish, I would heavily encourage you to check it out and reach out to them. I think it's a hugely important issue and the more we can do, the better. I think it would end up benefiting the entire community in the long run. So just to pull a little plug for them. Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mi nombre es Harriet Diaz. Yo vivo 160 Water's Edge Drive, Killable Hills, North Carolina. Y no es necesito ser habla española para ayudar esta ordenación. They actually do tell you that you do not need to speak a word of Spanish to help. And they are in dire need of people to volunteer, to tutor. It's a wonderful opportunity to help these young people with their homework because their parents quite often do not speak English, cannot read English and cannot help them with their homework. You only need to commit one day a week and it's a wonderful opportunity. You give more than you will ever give. You might be cryptic in Spanish on this. Your name's Diaz.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak tonight?
Good evening. My name is Sue Kelly. I live at 211 Seaville.
I live at 211 C Village Lane. And I'm up here to share with you something that the Community Appearance Commission is just beginning to look into. It has not yet developed, but it is a campaign that would deal with cigarette butts. This is very, very early stage. But what we hope down the road is to be able to do, number one, an education campaign. People need to know it's one of the most toxic pieces of trash that's out there. It has anywhere from 165 to 200 toxic chemicals. So, apart from thinking what smokers are sucking into their lungs, we have a real problem with people tossing these. So, we're hoping to work with some other folks. It's not in place at all. We've just begun to really talk about it. But the point of my being up here is to say, any of you who have a real interest in this, who would like to be involved or be a part of this, to let us know. Because we'd like to see it, we've got a couple of things in the works. We've got some great stickers and we have a current slogan that says, "Help KDH Kick Butt", which I think is really cool. And I think it has some real super wonderful potential. And I'll mention Michael Mijic because Michael really brought this to us in the beginning. He was the first one that came to us with this concept of, let's look at cigarette butts and see if we can do something about it. It's a problem, you look around, they're everywhere. So, it will involve finding some money and that's always difficult. But we're looking at some potential sources for that too. Thank you.
Great, thank you for sharing.
Sue, Surf Rider Foundation, actually in April at the Art Regis, we had the kids decorate tube, collection tubes. So, we have about 60 or 70 in our storage unit that maybe if I could coordinate you with you on our adopted beach and with the town to get them put up, like where the signs are. And not so much that people will use them, but just more of like a, kind of a visual of, hey, your butts should go in here and not on the beach kind of thing.
Yeah.
And the kids did some really cool stuff on them and they're all like a, sort of like a blue, you know, like a light blue. So, they're all paid for, decorated, and ready to be put up. So, if we could work with the town on getting them up, then.
Before we leave tonight, let you and I make sure we know how to get in touch with each other.
Sounds good.
And anybody that has any ideas on this or has worked on anything similar or wants to contribute ideas, we're really open to it.
And we do have a vacancy on the Community Appearance Committee. So, if they haven't had the time, we would love for you to volunteer, just complete a town volunteer application. Because we're looking for an additional member on that committee.
Thank you, very important point.
Great, thank you for bringing that up and you guys making the connection.
Cool, thank you.
Great, great, great. Anyone else?
Well, I'd like to talk one more since I.
That's what tonight's about.
Double dipping.
It's good to see all the candidates for office in KDH here tonight. I almost couldn't see you when I first came in. Most of you that are currently on the board know that bicycling in the Outer Banks has a tremendous economic impact on the Outer Banks. And CDOD did a study in 2003, published in 2004, that said the economic impact of bicycling on the Outer Banks was not less than $60 million a year. Since that time, just by looking at the environment, that's probably doubled. If you'll see the number of people that are riding bicycles, both locals and tourists that are coming in. So, I would hazard a pretty accurate guess that we're now over $100 million. What I've been really pleased about in the last couple of years, the attention that the county and the municipal governments have given to bicycle has resulted in much less harassment. Locals now seem to really appreciate that bicycles have a right to the road. I'm no longer getting spit on, things being thrown at me. This is actually true. Cursed out was a daily occurrence. And in the last several months, not one incident like that has happened. And even on the narrow roads that I ride, drivers are waiting until the way ahead is clear that they can pass safely. So, what I would hope that the forthcoming board considers is continuing that safety campaign that you've done such a good job with in cooperation with the other local governments. But also begin to really stress the economic benefits that cycling brings to the Outer Banks. I think we're sitting on a goldmine here. It just needs to be some work done to really bring it to fruition.
Thank you. Good to hear that. Anyone else? Commissioners, anything?
Yeah, I was going to say, Jack and I, over the last couple of years, we've talked informally about getting some kind of a bicycle event going and.
They're underway.
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask you about.
OBX Tri Shop sponsored a good ride for the fourth year in a row this past weekend. And Outer Banks Sports Events is now, has now organized with the cooperation of the Senior Games, and I'm talking about Brandy right now, of course, two bike races that will lead to qualification for the nationals. And that's a super thing for citizens of North Carolina. We don't, people like me don't have to travel to Pennsylvania and to Delaware and Maryland to qualify now. So, it's happening, we just need to pay more attention to it.
You know, you're senior. She's not. Long way to go.
So, today I met with Mary Quigley and Rob O'Brien, a sustainable energy professional. And we met to discuss the possibility of having a wind turbine on Kilova Hills property. And Mr. O'Brien is confident that Kilova Hills has the correct kind of wind to support a wind turbine. And so, I would like the town to explore the feasibility of installing a hybrid energy generating system, including a wind turbine, solar panels at one of our facilities. And I would like to schedule this for the December 11th meeting, if that's possible, as an agenda item. And hope that at that time, to obtain the board's authorization for staff to move forward with researching the possibility and provide the board with a report and recommendation later this winter.
That's great, Michael.
All right, I've got another thing too.
Okay.
With all these break-ins and theft, I was wondering how to have the citizens help our police combat this problem. Wouldn't you know it, there's an app for that. Suspicious Activity App. And it's started in West Virginia. So, I've asked Kurt Odell, our systems administrator, to look into that and see if, you know, it's something that we can do for our town and what the price is, something like that.
That'd be cool.
Find out more about that later, hopefully. Suspicious Activity. Well, that's what I was thinking of when I had that idea. It's like, well, I wonder if there's already an app for that? And sure enough, there was, so.
Actually, now that you bring it up, you remind me that I really miss my, what was it, a quarterly crime report? The email that we used to get from the police department? And when I inquired what happened to it, I was led to the police department's Facebook page, which is pretty much a PR thing. There's nothing about the crime report. And I really found that email from the police department very helpful to make citizens aware of what's going on and as far as crime is concerned. And I'd like to see that crime report come back.
Well, Chief and I can talk about that and see what we can do to make that happen.
That would be awesome.
Okay, thanks for bringing that up. Thanks for your comments. All right, we have some exciting stuff to come up in the next couple of meetings between November and December. Any other comments?
Nope.
Just a quick shout out, many of you were there with the Ice Cream Social Monday, phenomenal job. And that is really put on 100% by our town staff. Fire Department, Police Department, Administration, Public Works. I know I'm going to leave somebody out and I don't mean to, but planning stuff. It's amazing when you look around the staff there and, you know, it's not mandatory that they be there. They, you know, came on their own, smiling faces and happy. So, thank you, kudos to our town staff for just what a super, super event. And to the community for coming out and participating. That's what makes it special, just another special thing about KDH. Two other reminders, certainly early voting is continuing. This is a site here from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, Monday through Friday. It runs through Friday, November 3rd. And then Election Day, of course, is Tuesday, November 7th. There is a Saturday, or there's, I guess, two Saturday voting opportunities in Mania. They also run Monday through Friday. And if you needed to vote on a Saturday, you could do that. Actually, no, it's just this coming Saturday, I think is the last, I think is the last Saturday to vote over there. But double check me. And also remember, we're starting a new series, what's called Town Talks. The first one is going to be with our law enforcement. It's going to be on Saturday, November 3rd, from 8:30 in the morning till 10:00. It's kind of a coffee top kind of environment. Front Porch Cafe, Milehouse 6 is hosting that with us. And we are looking to probably do this on a quarterly basis. And we'll have members of the board who are available to be there as well as this one, Police Department. But in the future, we'll rotate that. So, then it may be Planning Department or maybe Public Works or whatnot. We'll create a schedule there forward. So, spread the word and join us for a quick cup of coffee or if you're available to do so. And with that, don't forget, I know we talked a lot about plastic bags. I think whatever comes out with plastic bags hopefully will be the forum for greater stewardship with plastic and items in general, litter, garbage, trash. But don't forget that we do have a voluntary participation in our recycling program and of course, our recycling center. So, if we can all continue to do our best to help with making our community the best place it can be to live, work, and play. Those are my comments. There's nothing else? Anything else from anyone? Then I guess a motion to adjourn. All those who favor, please stand and say aye.
Aye.
Thanks again for being here. Have a great evening.